All right. Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting, our special meeting for Tuesday, March ninth, 2021. Joanne, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holliday.
President.
Brian Callahan.
Here.
Steve Paul.
Here.
David Hoffler.
Here.
Ruth Minnan.
Here.
She was balding.
Here, in Sean Riordan.
Yeah.
We have a quorum. Could we please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right.
You ready? All right. Before we get started, Sean Riordan has a remembrance he would like to talk about. So go read it.
Yes, this, I just found out about this. I really have nothing prepared, but I just wanted to recognize a longtime Newburyport teacher passed away on March fifth. Elliot Bossinger, thirty-two years at Newburyport High, great teacher and coach. I had him for biology my sophomore year. Came up with a nickname, Sean-O, for me, and that stuck, so I'll always think of him when I hear that nickname. But a tremendous guy, and I just found out about it tonight, so I will tell him who to know.
Thank you. All right. So now we're going to straight into Superintendent Gallagher's presentation. Transition a full in-person learning discussion. And Superintendent, I will lock the camera on you in one second. See you and wonder about your wonderful presentation. All right. You should be all set.
All right. Thank you. My mask down here with socially distance. Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank the school committee and for organizing this additional meeting, special meeting for our reopening plan. As we all know, it's been a very challenging year, and we've been saying since day one, we're in this together. And I think now as we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, as we always say, we want to make sure we walk to that light and not run to that light. And I think our plan, our in-person phased-in plan, is going to meet the needs of everybody. So basically, it's, and Mayor Holliday can talk about this today. I have experienced this today. So in this pandemic, we are still in this poker environment where things constantly change, even today. We were manipulating and adjusting to a lot of the information that we received from DSE and also vaccinations throughout. But this is the environment that we're working in, and I think for all of us, we've stayed together throughout this. And I think we deal with some of these uncertainties and the complexities as they move forward. So I think for our Newburyport, working with our teachers association, ASME Union, also the IAs, care field workers, administrators, school committee, parents, I think we've all really have stayed together, which I really believe is the success of the school system. And I think what we have done is we focus on controlling the controllables, right? So we look at clarifying what we can control, what we're in charge of. We build a plan around those controllables. And then when you have that plan in place, you can manage a lot of the aspects of this year that are out of your control. So what that has done for us, the Newburyport, is it allows us to be proactive and problem-solving instead of reactive to issues. And then as you look at other, I think in the other scenarios where people focus on the non-controllable. When you start to do that, you start to lose the focus on what you can control. You waste a lot of energy on things that are out of your control, and then you start to be in a reactive environment. And so your concerns, your worries, your questions, they actually become inherent. So I think in Newburyport Public Schools and this community, we've really focused on what we can control. So mandates from the commissioner, guidelines from the commissioner, the issues with vaccinations are out of our control. And we really focus on this reopening plan on the things that we're in control of. So as we look at our success this year, our mitigation strategies, I think it's really, for us, has been the strength of the system, developing those.
Can I show up here for a second?
Yeah.
Sorry. Brian, I'm hearing that there's already over a hundred people in Zoom, and people can't see the meeting. Is there any other way? A hundred max. To the general public, if I could ask you if you're with your spouse or family members, and you're all having to be in the same place, could you just be together on this? I see some names that I know live in the same building. That would maybe help. We have over a hundred people logged in right now. Is it streaming anywhere else? Yes, it's on, but it's all generated from the Zoom.
It's on a cable station, correct?
It's on the cable station, but it's coming from this broadcast. There's nothing to do. It's unfortunate that we're within the waiver for public meetings law, right? And if everybody can't get into it.
Well, you can upgrade to five hundred.
But we are okay with the limitations of our technology. It's unfortunate. So even if people were to go to the website for the TV station, only a hundred people would see it? Maybe that's actually not true, because they're filming it on their one account. Okay, I'm sorry. I said that wrong. That's not right. Yeah, let's just refer people to the cable station. Okay, let's do that. Let's do that again, everybody.
It's not on the cable station.
Last night, City Council made a bunch of.
Want to take a minute here? You want to pause your presentation so I can try and talk to them for a second? Yeah. You have to start.
Well, we got to control the controllables. So we're taking a five-minute recess until we can.
Yeah. Callahan, three if you start singing the Jeopardy song. It'll be like Scotty and Star Trek. Out of fire. If we thought this was being broadcast, the cable station. Before it goes, that's the whole point of this, right?
Right.
You need to get us to get there.
Joan Shan saying, we're now upon the.
Okay.
Hey, Brian, supposedly we're on local nine now. Okay, so we're on channel nine. It looks like we're good on channel nine. Okay. Apparently, we're good on channel nine, so have that.
So as we've been focusing throughout this year, mitigation strategies, you know, the weekly meetings with the medical advisory team since the summertime, it's been very helpful and consistent as we analyze the cases, the trends, obviously our mask and hand washing, the COVID contact tracing, our social distancing, all the work that Steve Burcom and his team has done with the ventilation upgrades. And as we all know, a couple of weeks ago, we are working, we were piloting the pool testing, surveillance testing. We've done more pools this week. In March fifteenth, we'll be up and running district-wide. And that, we plan on having a pool testing from March fifteenth all the way throughout to the end of the school year. So we're really excited about that, and I can't thank the nursing team enough for all their work with that. And on the school side and the city side, since January, we've been working tirelessly in trying to get vaccinations and assisting with our teachers for that. And Mayor Holliday will have some little more information on the regional distribution that will be set up in Amesbury. But these are all, with all these strategies and everything together, we're feeling pretty confident with our plan. So when we look at the cases over the year, as you can see, all of the decisions that we made about going remote for a week after holidays or two weeks after holidays, I think were really spot on. You can see the Thanksgiving Day spike that they talked about. So in Newburyport, we had seventy-six cases that week, sixty and then sixty-seven cases. And then when we looked at the Christmas break and the remote that we decided to do after Christmas break, you can just see the cases, how high they were, and we're in the red zone. But as you see from mid-January with a lot of the planning, with the surveillance testing, our cases in the community started to trend on the downward trend. So we're really excited about that, to see that. We have, you know, at the end of January, thirty-four, February twenty-three, thirty-two, and then we're at twenty. And then last week, we're at eleven cases in the community. So that downward trend, along with a lot of our mitigation strategies, really puts us, I think, in a good place to start bringing our students back. The other piece for us is within the school system, we have not had the cases very similar to in the community. When there's a spike in the community, we had cases within the school system, and that has also leveled off. What we're really excited about is the surveillance and the pool testing. For us, from March fifteenth and on, we're not going to be guessing on the prevalence within the school system. So you educate a guess. Now that we have that data, the weekly data coming in, we'll be able to make sound decisions regarding the decisions with learning, because we'll be able to see the prevalence within the schools. And that's just the ongoing practices. So these things are not going away, and we're not going to stop these mitigation strategies because they have been so successful, the Newburyport Public Schools. So mask wearing, hand washing, contact tracing, although we're bringing students back in bigger cohorts, we're still, to the best of our ability, to keep our students in cohorts and then monitor the movement throughout the day. COVID monitoring, the last school committee meeting, I did click on that, the dashboard. So the people that are watching in our school faculty and sports app, you can see the cases throughout the year. And Catherine Page and Kathy Ricchio, they did a great job with that website. Co-op grouping, as I said, we're going to continue that strategy throughout the rest of the school year. So if there is a case, we can contact trace and isolate the case as quick as possible. So as we're looking at a lot of the social distancing and then, you know, going as the state is going by no less than three feet, we've done a lot of work over the past three weeks and four weeks. You're looking at classroom capacity, classroom sizes, lunch sizes. All of these things, as we said, March first, we really take the idea of a student coming into the building throughout the day and then leaving the building, and then monitoring all of that movement throughout the day, from the classroom to the hallways, to lunch, snacks. So a lot of the work by medical advisory team, our nursing staff, our administrators, everybody's been really detailed, really planning out the phased-in approach. So the surveillance testing, we did mention this last time. So as we say, in March fifteenth, we're going to be weekly pool testing throughout the district. That's going to continue throughout the school year. The state is sponsoring up to April eighteenth, but we do anticipate more funding coming from that stimulus package to hopefully carry us for the rest of the year. And we also have extra money and COVID money that will be able to sustain the pool testing for the rest of the school year. So even when the staff is fully vaccinated, we then will switch the pool testing more robustly to the student population. And right now, we're doing staff and students in classrooms as part of the weekly pool testing. The vaccinations, as we all know, I think we have been very aggressive in trying to assist our staff to the best of our ability to get vaccinations. You know, we did find out Cataldo was denied once again this afternoon for the supply for educators. But in the meantime, Mayor Holliday and the local regional was been working very hard. They set up a regional site out of Amesbury High School beginning this weekend. And then that's going to be on-site throughout the duration of the vaccination. So, Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to jump in now or at the end?
Happy to. This was a really important initiative that, you know, the eight communities that we were working with came together and did a great job in terms of vaccinating our first responders and reached out to the state and said, we really need a regional site up in this area of the state. And, you know, I spoke directly with the governor, lieutenant governor, and then brought all of the local communities we're working with together several weeks ago, and our site was approved. And we began moving forward. We had, there's been some glitches with the links. And I apologize to all the members of the Newburyport community. In my robocall last night, I gave you the wrong information, which was provided to me by, you know, the people in the collaborative, but we're working on having a single point of communication to ensure that all the messaging is right and consistent. So, and I believe the Amesbury site crashed today. We didn't get the link to the right link until three oh two, when the site opened at three, and all the appointments were gone. However, we are all aware and all are prioritizing the need to vaccinate teachers. So we have a team working on that. We hope to be able to have direct answers for teachers and the school districts that we're working with shortly about when we can begin. I mean, the president has said by the end of April, teachers need to be vaccinated. The governor has moved it up so that they can start on Wednesday to register. It's going to be challenging though, because, you know, sites are full and, you know, it's a challenge. But I have a feeling we're, you know, hopefully going to be able to do something special just for teachers at some point going forward in the next couple of weeks. So stay tuned. We are all very, very committed to prioritizing teachers.
Thank you, Mayor. And then also the local pharmacies. And so we've been providing information for the educators. But as Mayor said, from the president to the governor, I would imagine within the next couple of weeks, there's going to be more and more vaccinations available for the education, for the educators. So we're excited with that, and when we have information, we'll definitely do so as soon as possible. But we're still behind the scenes, Kathy Ricchio and myself, looking at many other options. You know, hopefully, maybe get back with Cataldo, and, you know, we'll see. Once they can get those vaccinations, they're a great company. They're very helpful to us with the surveillance testing. So we're going to keep working. And as the mayor said, from the city to the school, to the region, education, the educators is the priority. So as we sent out the survey last week regarding parents, and if they're in the hybrid and the social distancing is reduced to no less than three feet, would you come back? And eighty-five percent of the parents that we surveyed, there was eleven hundred responses, so eighty-five percent of the parents said yes, they will come back for the full in person. My child's in the hybrid program, but would look to switch to the remote academy, and there was thirty students district-wide for that. My child's in remote learning, and we'll continue with that. These students were seventy-five students. We'll right now continue with the remote academy. And this last one, my child's in remote learning, but will switch to the in-person. As we looked at this data, a lot of these are the high school students that right now are live streaming that are deciding to come back. So, and as we said, so all of these different learning models and all the decisions are based on, you know, from the metrics to our safety strategies, to our ability to bring surveillance testing in with the vaccinations on, you know, on deck and coming, and along with the DSE guys regulate. So it's not just one of these aspects. It's really when you look at it as a whole, bringing all these together, we feel like we're in a pretty good place to phase in full in person. So this was just released at two o'clock today. As we talk about that poker environment and changing. So really, the elementary school phased-in grades is going to be through the state. It's April fifth. And they're looking for starting April fifth. It's five days per week, full in person. Middle school, they're the same, all hybrid and remote learning models no longer come towards morning time. And that is geared for Wednesday, April twenty-eighth. And then the high school phase, they're still trying to figure that out at the state level. But they're saying at least two weeks in advance to the date of the high school. So I just, for Newburyport other schools and working with our teachers association, our teacher leaders, our building principals, medical advisory team, Kathy Ricchio, custodians, our team as a whole community is really have stayed together, and we've stayed organized. So all these dates are being released today, while many other districts don't have a plan in place, and they're kind of saying, how are we going to do this? In Newburyport, because we've been very proactive, when these dates came out, we have a plan in place that not only does meet this criteria, but also we do a phased-in approach, which we feel is a lot safer, and it's a little bit earlier than these dates. So increasing in-person phased-in approach. As we said on March first of last week, our first goal was to identify identify students for additional support. So at the Brezlinian in the Mallon, we're looking at that as a two-week period. We're phasing that in, where in every classroom and different programming, we're phasing that in. So some students have been back this week, while other students are going to be coming back next week. So we're phasing that in, from kindergarten all the way to the Mallon. The NOK and the high school have been phasing that in already, and they're just going to continue to phase in those students back for additional support. So that was really our phase one approach. The phase two, Brezlinian, four-day in person. So what we're looking to do here is by coming in on March twenty-second. So our pre-K and K, pre-K, the extended full day, they're going to be coming in starting on March twenty-second, Monday through Thursday, which is their four-day program, from eight-thirty-one is the extended day. And then the pre-K full day, eight-thirty to three. On March twenty-second, we're looking at the kindergarten level, almost phase that in like we do when we open up school, where the Brezlinian grades one to three come in for a little ahead of time, and then the kindergarten students come in afterwards. So for us on this week, the AM Kindergartens will come in the two full days on the twenty-second and the twenty-third, and then the PM Kindergartens are going to come in on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. So that's really important, because remember, these students have not been together. They haven't gone to lunch. So we have to, it's almost like a whole reopening of school. So we got to acclimate them to a full day and kind of all the nuances that happen with that. So starting on March twenty-ninth, the kindergarten will move to the four-day in-person, very similar to the other schools. For grades one to three on March twenty-second, all students will be back. Cohort A and B will be here on Monday and Tuesday. We want to keep the Wednesday remote, so that gives our medical advisory team, gives the administration a time where we have two full days. We can analyze and we can make tweaks. We can look at arrival, dismissal, and then make the changes in between. And then the students will come back again on Thursday and Friday for the full in person. Our goal by focusing on each school, as you will see, it allows us and our medical advisory team to do the phased-in approach, where we can have all hands on deck when all the kids are back, and then just to make sure that all of our protocols, everything is in place, working with the teachers association, classroom teachers and everybody, so we're good to go. The second phase, three, so now the Brezlinian has been in for the four days starting March twenty-second. So we're going to take the same approach for the Mallon. So we're going to bring in the Mallon, grades four and five, the same idea. All students in on Monday and Tuesday, all hands on deck, medical advisory team, people will be here with them throughout the week, and then we'll make tweaks as we move forward. So the Wednesday will be a remote day, gives us a break to make the changes, and then they're back on Thursday and Friday. So the Mallon will be back home person the four days on March twenty-ninth. Principals will follow up after tonight, out to families with the specific details this week on what that's really going to look like. But this is the overall plan for the full in person. So phase four, with the new guidelines, our original plan, we would like to have kept those Wednesdays for a couple more weeks, but with phase four and the new guidelines that came already too. So April fifth to April ninth, what we would like to do is we have both the Brezlinian and the Mallon in for the five days. We're going to take the Wednesday that was remote, and that Wednesday will now be a half a day for all, for the five days back. So they will have the April fifth to the ninth, Brezlinian and Mallon, a five days in person with Wednesday as a half a day. And that will start to allow us to do all the things. I have a slide that will kind of highlight that. But all of those things that we're concerned about, about gives our teachers time to really start to analyze the student data, gives our teachers time to identify potential learning loss, gives our teachers time to really planning for the summer and the summer programming, and then also gives our teachers time, time to start planning for the fall. So we meet the criteria of full in person for the elementary school. We want to take the same approach now for the NOK middle school. So on April twelve, grades six, seven, and eight, this is the week before the vacation, will come in the same idea. So Monday, Tuesday, they're here, all hands on deck, medical advisory team, nurses, administrators, central office. We make sure the week goes well. Wednesday, we'd stay a remote day, and then Thursday, Friday, all students are back. As we come back from vacation on the twenty-sixth, grades six, seven, and eight will follow the same schedule. So we'll have five days in, same idea. Wednesday will be a half a day, and most times will be determined. The idea is not to serve lunch, a typical lunch on the Wednesdays, but we will provide lunch for all students, bag lunch on the way out. So all students will get lunch, but this will also assist us with some more planning and then also making sure we're feeding the students throughout the day. Mr. Wolf and his leadership team, very similar to every other school, they've been working tirelessly on the high school. Their targeted date of the return is also on four-twenty-six. So our goal right now is when we come back from vacation, all K-8 students will be full in person for the five days with the targeted date of Mr. Wolf in the high school also on that Monday. But they got to work out a little bit more details, because as you know, the high school is a little bit different with the scheduling and a lot of those challenges. But I think they're pretty close where they want to be. Very important for the parents and families that are listening. So the remote academy and the remote learning option will continue for families that are not ready to come back. And then also the high school is the same way. So for the students that don't feel comfortable coming back, they will continue with the live stream. But I know Mr. Wolf and his guidance council is really encouraging students to come back.
Sean, the DSC guidance that showed us said that, I mean, I thought I saw it there for me. Sean, the D S C guidance that showed us said that, I mean, I thought so, it's fair for me to that the remote learning isn't going to count as time online. How how does this reconcile with what we're making?
So for the remote learning, the hybrid learning and the remote learning as well, it's probably like the hybrid process. So that's what's not counting, but the you have to still provide for the rest of the school year and option for families who just do not want to come back. Yeah.
I'm shocked that D S C is clearly that.
So they're saying that it only counts if parents choose, it's not a school decision.
Correct. Yeah. You have to give that parent option still for the rest of the year. Yes. So here is all of what we just talked about, just in, you can just see the timeline. And then you can see really the faith in approach, which which I really believe is just going to be beneficial to all of us because we can just really concentrate on one school at a time. And it's all a face in process. Now, other districts and some of my colleagues, you know, there's different ways of going about this. Some of just all in right on that one day. And I just think if we bring back a thousand students on one day, it's just, we're not, we're not comfortable with that. We like that face and approach because we can really concentrate on one school at a time with the ultimate goal after April vacation, we're back. And then the calendar impacts. So as we're saying, after April vacation, all schools will have the five days of the in person instruction. Wednesday as an early release. On Wednesday, all students will be served, as I said, a bag lunch on their way on the leaving school. And then the ideas and the importance for us to really start focusing and assessing intervention and struggling learners for this year. It gives us that time, a plan for our summer school and then fall planning for reopening. And as we all know, as as we were talking about the social emotional impact on the students, it gives us a leg up to really start preparing for that. And then all of the other aspects that that we're going to need to look at, the social emotional impact, the learning loss. We may need new mitigation strategies throughout not only this year, but as we move into next year. And then really develop a strong intervention and scheduling programming for our students. The one note that throughout all of this and as I said, all of our unions and associations have been just awesome. Our ASPE contract, as you all recall, before the pandemic, the Good Friday was an early release on Good Friday, and that was part of an agreement to bring Good Friday back to gain an extra learning day. But because of the need of bringing students back and the all hands on deck and not disrupting the student's schedule, the union was in full agreement to move that early release to the Friday before the memorial day. But that's part of their contract. So and that gives us an opportunity also. We're already starting a plan, but also bring, you know, Michael Eaton has been part of our district too. So this would be a good day for for us to kind of regroup on that Friday. So kind of a win win for everybody. But that would be the only early release that contractually we would be obligated to have. So because of the other days that we had in the calendar and with the support of the Wednesdays, we can do a lot of the planning throughout the rest of the year. So that will be helpful. So we can, if I'm not sure what the calendar looks like in front of us, but this is something that Joanne and I might prepare for the 15th. And we could give a new calendar, take a look at the board on for the rest of the year. And then the last piece. So this is, yeah, we're in this together. This is some ages she moved on. We're very proud of her. She got a very important job at Mass General. It's a tough decision for her, but she's a big asset for us. But I just think that that's, that's what we're all about. I think from day one, emphasizing especially within the school system and especially for our school committee, staying together because there's going to be a lot of adversity. There's going to be a lot of noise, sometimes outside of the organization. But I think all of us came to school every day and really worked together and trying to do what's best for kids during some unbelievable, challenging time. And it's not over, as we know, but we feel this phase then plan meets the needs for, I think, for everybody and we're ready to move forward with it. So. There you go.
So I just want to say thank you, Sean, and your team for for this. I know a couple of weeks ago I had four twenty six in my head for getting back to full person up in the district and just playing upstairs. So I just, it was a great job.
Thank you. And a lot of, as you said, a lot of work, a lot of people compromise and finding ways. We're just in such a better place in this community. I just because I think the people that come to work every day really put kids first and we come up with, you know, we solve problems and can't say enough about our associations that we work with.
Yes. Sean, one of the things that I really like about the plan is is the ability to use those Wednesdays, the half days for teachers to really, once kids are back, to really take a look at the impact that the isolation had and potential academic impact. And figure out how we're going to mitigate that. And I I just want my question actually more ties into the budget proposal that the district has drafted. But can you talk about some of the supports that we hope will be available next year to the budget to to help address some of those issues that we're identifying?
Yes, I think, you know, from our pre K budget, you saw, I think we were focused on those three areas, right? You know, curriculum instruction assessment, the social emotional needs of our students. So within the operational budget that we're proposing, you see intervention as you see support. See behavioral health coordinator, which I really believe is going to be essential for coordinating, I think, our strategy on dealing with students that are coming back. I mean, we're already seeing just even with phase one and credit, you know, the president and teachers, they're already having to kind of reteach because although you have two cohorts, they have not been together. So the the students are almost like learning, you know, it's like starting school all over again. And so some students coming back because of class, but you know, especially for the younger students, when they walk into the class, there was eight students and now it's fifteen students. So there, that just image right there is taking time where the faculty is already just, you know, kind of put the lesson aside, like this is more important to afflame our students back. But our operational budget, you know, that we're going to, I think, talk about on the 15th, you'll see a lot of, I think, ads utilizing the extra grant to really address a lot of those needs that we anticipate. But as you said, Mr. Menon, I think this by having our teachers and administration really start focusing, it gives us, I really believe, a focus and specific way of addressing those needs instead of just guessing. It gives us, I think, a leg up as we move into the summer and as we move into next year.
I really appreciate the plan based in approach. I think it's very wide to approach it that way. I have a couple of questions. One was about Wednesday afternoon, the students have work that they go home with, or is it a true half day?
It would be probably a true half day. So I'm sure there would be. So the idea is, I think, for parents that are listening and also our teachers, it's we're coming back to the five day in person. So there won't be as much of the, you know, the word synchronous going to y'all. So I think, I think parents are going to be a little happy with that. And it's almost more of that traditional school. So on the Wednesday, you know, they'll go through their lessons throughout the day, but I'm sure there'll be some practice assignments and things that need to go home. But it's not, you know, especially the the K Ds, we're going to be back into the similar, you know, a similar routine.
Thank you.
Everybody else have any questions?
Yeah, just stuff. Have people been, I mean, I know there's a process where you have to give permission to sign up for full testing. Has there been any thought about, say, you have people that don't want to be protesting?
Yeah. So right now, since we opened it up, Joanne getting a little update, I'll put it on my desk. But it was, oh, is it over yet? Oh, I love it. It was. We're very, right now with the full testing, we have eight hundred ninety six participants that have signed up and we're still getting consent forms. These are the consent forms that have come in. So we're still working with the family. So I think I think where we're at right now with the full testing, we're in a good, really a good spot because the idea is on the 15th, it's a really roll out the comprehensive testing. We tested. We've been testing trial classes and pre K all the way to grade eight and those trial tests went well. And it's not just the testing and how the testing, it's about getting the information back. So the system, as we continue to roll it out, it's it's easier for teachers and students and we're getting real live information.
But it's better than the end test, you have to wait a year to get your results.
Yeah, you get your results pretty quick. So I guess, yes.
I forgot that. My second question. Will the children have specials again?
Yeah. It's going to be very, yeah, we're back. We'll be back. So, yeah, so the specials and and that's why I'm going to leave up the details to the principals because at each building, it's going to look a little bit different. Yeah, I think we're we're looking forward to a, it's close to a normal, I mean, it's not going to be a normal school day, but we're going to be, you know, we'll be, kids and kids will be back in the group. I mean, obviously the classroom setup is still going to be facing forward. We still have to observe all of the mitigation strategies, cafeteria, there's a lot of work around there, but but at least the the students will be back in school with the teachers. Yes.
Could you talk about, do we have any concerns about having sufficient staffing? Are teachers opting not to come back, retiring?
No.
The means of absence?
Nothing highly ordinary. Yeah. So we're, I think we're in good shape for staffing and our staffing patterns. But as as we're all hopeful with the March 11th signup for educators. And as you alluded to, Mary, it may not be this weekend, but within, there's going to be more and more vaccinations for educators over the next week or two. So I think that will also assist. But right now, our, I tell you, our staff is is amazing. Even when I, with the phased in process, and I got to visit some classrooms. So because we're identifying students, those classrooms, they grew already. And the staff is just how they handle that and and how they organize. They're just, it's amazing, amazing stuff. They want to, we all said we want our kids back. We just want to make sure we do it in the safest way possible. And I think with the plan that we have in place with that mitigation strategy, the surveillance, the vaccinations coming, I think, I think we're in a good place and.
The high school, are we able to maintain frequent distance of all the classrooms?
Yes. So for right now, there there isn't going to be any classrooms. It's right now, we have no less than three feet. So depending on the classes, you know, so you're going to have some classes on might be at a three foot, some classes might be at a four, some at a five and some are still at a six, depending on the numbers of students. At the high school, because of the live streaming, this is like, and Andy Wolf and his team did a great job with the live streaming. It's going so well that it's, we want to bring the students back, but because they did such a great job, you know, some of the kids are comfortable. But so Mr. Wolf and his team have been encouraging students to come back four days a week for the past three weeks now. And his numbers are increasing. I think it was great to see some of the seniors. I think the seniors are starting to come back to have that senior experience before before they graduate. So I think they're those that senior class is kind of leading the way of kids coming back. So that's a work in progress, but there isn't going to be any classes that we're going to have to be less than the the absolute minimum. And then we also, just so the families, we'll also maintain the six foot distancing at all times when there's snacks or students are eating and lunch. So that's where the six foot distancing is mandated.
Are you adding more lunches?
At the high school level, there may be more lunches on the scheduling here. Principal Furlong and Principal Rossi, they're kind of working that out, but right now the idea and they'll send out more information is, so if you have cohort A and cohort B, let's say at the mall, cohort A will go out to recess while cohort B eats in the class. They can maintain the six foot and then they flip off. So it's a lot of these strategies that the principals working with teacher leaders are kind of going through, along with Pan Kelly and food service. So we're coordinating all of that and how that's going to look. And that's why I really believe having that Wednesday for us to collaborate, it's all of those things that although you have the best plans when all, when everyone's back, as Mike Allen has said, you might have to make, you have to see how it looks and then make changes. So.
And your last question, how could you talk about transportation?
Yes, so transportation, as you know, the the regulations also have been modified. So you've got two in a seat. And working with Lee Lampkin, so she's comfortable with our kids coming back. A lot of the parents are still choosing to drive and not utilize the transportation. We're comfortable with our bus busing routes and the students on the buses. So we should be in good shape with that. We don't have to really change any of that. Yes.
To piggyback on that question, will parents have an opportunity to opt back into transportation if they wanted to at this point?
I'm not sure. I'll have to, I mean, that's something that we're talking about right now. But I think the the parents right now, the ones that have opted for transportation, I think we accommodate them first and that there's additional seats or something. Yes.
Are we still down on nurses? Do we have someone that's ready to go?
Yeah, we're in the process of, yeah, so hiring. And I think our new nurse will be here at the end of the month.
I just have one more. So for the phase one approach, I know the Brezlin hand got back this week, which is awesome. And we've got the Mall next week, starting for high needs kids going back four days. You said the knock is already doing this? So do they, have they already identified all their kids with high needs?
Yeah, they're bringing, they're bringing them back now, some of the students back now. But they already have their their list of bringing students back.
All the knock kids that were going back four days right now.
I'm not sure if it's all the not, all the kids.
Kids that would be identified.
Correct.
Those high needs are going back four days, they should have already been back there.
I believe so, yes. Yeah. And we can follow up with that with the specifics at the, at each building.
In general, the parents who have a question about that could contact Special Education.
Yeah, special ed, the principals.
Who would be able to clarify or support?
Right. And as and with the phase in plan, the other piece too, it's, it may not be all the students all at once because as you're looking at two weeks from now, they might be prioritizing some students that need the support while some others that may be in, you know, cohort A right now are doing pretty well that that aren't, it's not everyone all back. I think it's also people that we're identifying might be four days, just to get a a jump stop before everyone comes back.
I'm also happy with the, with the approach. You know, I was a lot happier with the vaccination was coming our way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just going to project forward and saying, once you release kids in the hallway to transition between classes, it's taking that three foot distance is just a difficult thing to imagine.
Right. I think for the, you know, we'll work with, as I said, with the principals and advisory, I think, you know, when the hallway wise, you know, movement, you might be able to structure that a little bit more. Where you can space them all for the six feet, but it's it's really the, I think, a classroom setting.
Spend half a day getting kids to stop, go, stop.
Right.
So I was a lot happier with the vaccination coming next week. But that's a bit out of our control.
Right.
Then teachers can sign up, something.
Well, teachers are already signing up, like around the state.
Right, so I mean, hopefully they, if they're able to, they get it.
They're just going.
Correct.
Although, I would like CR, like disappear entirely, just because there isn't a few of them.
So, I mean, Cattal, I, I'll tell you, Cattal though is wanting, wanting to continue to work with us, it's, you know, it's, it's the access to the vaccine.
So they're trying to set up, they've just set up sixteen additional regional sites. So they're trying to make sure that they have vaccines to roll out to those sites. And, you know, there also is, um, you know, the opportunity for teachers to volunteer at the clinics where they can get a site to get their vaccine to.
Yeah, we, with this, um, I'll tell you, it's not a lack of effort, we're back to the drawing board and.
I wasn't putting that out here, it's just.
Right.
Yeah, from the state level, it's amazing the things they push on, the things they push, push away.
With, with those regional sites, do you have, within that region, to get vaccinated there? Could we plus our teachers over? Seriously.
No, plus, man, I don't wanna be talking about plus.
But the problem is, is that it's, uh, one of the requirements is that it's considered a open to everybody, somebody from Springfield could drive all the way up here to get vaccinated.
I know, I know seniors who have been driving out of Springfield and Mudlow to get their shots. That's where the.
Well, we did, uh, seniors in our, uh, low income accounting authority on Sunday, uh, here, so, you know, we were able to do that. The next is to try and deal with, yeah, about ninety all out that have to be addressed. And then, teacher.
And Sean, I just also wanna clarify, um, music probably been the one program that was flat out canceled. Band and chorus, those are gonna be.
They're gonna be back. We actually got guidance, um, that we'll be able to sing again. So, yeah.
Yeah, to hear you, Sean.
I got, I.
I think the new thingy does karaoke too.
Yeah, so the, the new guidance is that students will be allowed to sing again, and we're just waiting on the guy, you know, the, the guy until that's, we actually, uh, with the, um, just laughing, because the commission has sent out the, the regulation at two, and we have a superintendent meeting tomorrow, so. So we'll find out what that's gonna be about. But I think there might be more follow-up around lunches, but looking at maybe more guidance around performing arts, um, but we'll see.
I didn't see, said anything about end test stuff then?
Uh, they have postponed. They, it's still, uh, on, we're still gonna have it, but I think they delayed it.
So even, even the parents who choose are gonna, kids are still gonna be brought in at some point to take the test.
I think so.
I, I didn't see anything in the documents, so it's just.
Right. Well, we're working, yeah, we worked on, on this piece, but then we'll give an end test update, because that keeps also changing.
Uh, all right, we all set with, uh, this item? Thanks, Sean.
All right.
Uh, calendar changes. Back there.
It's the staff, yeah.
Uh, so the next item, the calendar changes, which I mean, I think we'll probably talk about that after the fifteenth, like you said.
Right.
The one thing I wanted to, uh, talk to everybody about is the second shot, is the one that potentially gives people worse side effects, you wanna try and do it on a Friday?
Correct.
Right? If everybody's, okay, I would like to make a motion that for the calendar, we give the superintendent an open-ended, I'm gonna call a half-day or, or a, a remote day rather, on a Friday. So if he finds out, like on the Tuesday, that they're gonna get their shots on a following Friday, then we're gonna just do it without having to have another school committee meeting just above the calendar. Do an open-ended, sometimes you have the right to call it day with that, is that all right?
We'll check that.
Yeah.
Um, can we get a roll call vote on that?
Can we talk about it first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry, discussion.
I, I guess I'd be okay with it. Again, I was thinking much more favorably about that one. I thought they were all gonna go and, you know, if it turns out that everyone's all over the place getting their own shots, then you're gonna have some people, you know, a third of the staff are gonna have to take off this day, and then you're gonna call a day for another, you know, same, it's, it just seems.
I guess it will depend on how many are getting on their own and what that volume is at that time, right?
Right.
So we'll know the first one's gonna have an X, that we don't, we don't want.
The original, the, the original plan, I think was the sixteenth, we were looking, working with Cattal though, so if we got the second shot, we're looking at Friday, the sixteenth, and what we're gonna do is have a professional development day. So students wouldn't be in, but the teachers would. Um, and then if someone got that shot, you know, and they felt well, they could continue with the PD. But if for some reason they weren't feeling too well, then we could have the option. But I think if, if you have that option, if that's going to happen down the road, um, what we would do is just have a professional development day for our vaccination.
Yeah, you know, if, if the teachers end up sort of getting shots scattered over a period of time, they have typically used to think they're all.
Yeah. And, and, uh, you know, if you play that out, if, even if it's half the faculty has already received the vaccination and said the other half wanted, I mean, so we would have a professional development day that we could use anyway, so it's not just for the vaccination, it would be have the special development, just in case there's a reaction where someone could return to the PD, and you wouldn't wanna have classes go on.
Okay, if we redo the motion then, but to give them an open-ended date for a PD day after the second shot, after the first shot, so we just don't know, I just don't know. I don't wanna have Sean not be able to do a PD day, we have to have a meeting.
Wouldn't we do a month in advance?
Yeah.
So who knows, we knew, we knew back in mid-February, let's, let's give a shot, and then change it again.
Things move pretty quickly right now with vaccines. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable giving Sean the latitude to adjust the schedule and call for PD day if there are, if the circumstances call for it. If we have, you know, two hundred teachers that are getting shut, second shots the same day, that's one. But I, I'm totally supportive, giving him flexibility to do that.
Okay, we need a second, the motion is changed.
Can I just clarify one more thing? Like Sean, the, the teachers have additional days this year for sick time, right, because of COVID related? Would they be able to use a COVID sick day if the vaccine, I guess, so they don't have to burn their own?
Yeah, we've been, we're working with teachers right now, so if a teacher had a vaccination date, then we're working with them for that. Yeah, we're, we're taking care of that.
Great.
On an individual basis right now.
Any other discussion? Very done. We have a roll call, please. Uh, to give the superintendent latitude to have a PD day if needed for after the second shot.
May holiday?
Yes.
Right, challenge him?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, supervisor?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you recall this?
Yes.
In Charlie Edes?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously this week. So now we're coming to the public comment. Gonna give me a couple of seconds so I can make sure we have all this coordinated. I'm gonna back up, so pull that out for a bit, so I can talk. Uh, we're gonna enter the public comment now, uh, as standard, it's gonna be two minutes, please, say your name and address. Please not reference your own child's personal situation, that would be great. And please raise your hands in the room, and then we'll call you, uh, in order. I have Chris Burke, please.
Hi, how's it going? Uh, school committee, superintendent, mayor, how are you?
Well, thank you.
So I, I live in a nine-minute circle, um, and I, I had, um, I just had a, a couple of questions. I, I've lived in town for a while, I have, you know, a dozen friends and family that are, that are teachers. Ma- Mayor Holiday had stated earlier that prioritizing teachers for a vaccine, um, very important. But in my experience, speaking to, uh, my friends that are teachers, morale is, is pretty low. And how do you reassure parents, faculty, and staff that they are safe when they are feeling uncomfortable to come to work without a vaccine? Especially given that even this week, a student showed up with COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen symptoms and was allowed to remain in school and exposed roughly a dozen, uh, individuals.
Thank you. This is not a discussion, uh, time, and it's just public comment. Uh, whoever comments, that has been recorded. I'm gonna ask Nicole, if you could please say your first and last name, because only your first name is on the Zoom.
Sorry, yes, Nicole Lanian.
Hello, go ahead.
Hi, um, my. I'm sorry, can you hear me? I feel like for April vacation, will there be any notification to families on, as far as traveling and protocols on that? Because I, I, everyone, everyone's gonna be back five days a week. I feel like with February vacation, and I know we got a call once vacation had already started, but will there be anything in anticipation of that vacation week in terms of travel guidelines and returning back afterwards?
Thank you. Uh, I, I know a lot of people are gonna have things that sound like questions, uh, but we'll be able to answer them. The superintendent can probably send out, uh, communication to the district, uh, as soon as he can. Thank you. We have Haley Nissen.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, so my question, and again, I know that you can't answer it just now, but just for the record, is, um, I just wondered at what point, um, the Wednesday afternoon might be brought back in. I'm grateful that we're all going back four and a half, um, days. My son was ecstatic on Friday when he found that out. But I'm just wondering, because I, I was expecting the, the guidance today said, um, five, to return to full-time in-person instruction, five days per week. Um, and that Wednesday is, is just a part day. So if you could just address, address that, I would be, um, grateful.
Dana Reimer, and, uh, please remember to say your name and full address, please.
Hi, Dana Reimer, two Moren Road. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have, uh, just two comments, um, part questions, I guess. One is, um, will the close contacts be redefined? The definition of a close contact with the change in distancing? And what will be, will we get communication about the plan for students who are quarantined? And how they will attend any type of school remotely when there is no remote school happening anymore? My son did a full fourteen-day quarantine for being a close contact back in October. He's at the Mullen School, and we, it nearly broke us because there was no live instruction happening at that time. We were just getting a few five-minute check-ins, so the idea of going back to that off, obviously, we're gonna have kids getting exposed more, even though our numbers are down and our metrics are looking so good, I just would like to know what the plan is, because that was, that was really tough at that time of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, um, superintendent, we'd encourage everybody to talk to the principals correctly with any of these questions to email them or call.
Correct, and we'll take them under advisement, and then we'll address them for, uh, communications going on.
Shockingly, with over a hundred people in this, there are no more handpicks. The, uh, going once, going twice. Does anybody else have any public comment? All right, I will, I have, uh, Josh Baumfeld, please.
Hey, guys, Josh Baumfeld, seventy-five High Street. Thanks for the presentation tonight. Uh, just based on someone else's comment, I just wanted to share, um, just some data to make people feel a little more, more comfortable about this. First of all, data from around the world shows that in-school transmission rates are really low in the setting of mitigation. Data from Marin County show there were only six cases of possible in-school transmission. Some show none. In-school positivity rates that we talked about, they aren't really the same as rising community positivity rates. Even the data that we hear about from England to support keeping schools closed failed to give the raw data, and that study, only point zero two percent of students tested positive for COVID, and only point seven percent of the total number of positive cases in the country were in students or school staff. In North Carolina, during a really high community COVID rate period, there were only a handful of within-school transmissions when there should have been eight or nine hundred that were expected, and there were no transmissions from students to staff. In a study from Wisconsin published in the CDC's publication, despite widespread community transmission, there was a thirty-seven percent lower incidence in the in-school population than the general population, and no cases of student-to-teacher spread. Additionally, the arguments to, to stay hybrid or remote, to keep the cohorts is great, and it seems reasonable. But again, these mitigation techniques presume that everybody's already infected. It's just like handling blood using universal protocol. In fact, the state of Ohio showed that COVID positivity rates were the same in a group of students that had a close contact with a mask to a person that tested positive for COVID compared to another control group that did not. So they indicated that transmission was really happening at home and not in school, and that masking works, even when another person nearby with a mask on was COVID positive. And the most compelling data came from an experiment in Germany where they did robust regression analyses, and they showed that opening schools actually caused a decrease in community positivity rates. So I think the superintendent alluded to, there's harm being done to the kids, and the teachers are gonna have to deal with this, uh, coming up. But that right now, maybe the safest place for these kids and these teachers to be is actually in school. So thank you for getting them back at this time.
Thank you. Uh, can we have Lynn Scal, please?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, uh, yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I appreciate the presentation. Um, I would like to say that I, I am truly grateful to Commissioner Riley that he has forced the hand of the districts in this state to get the kids back to in-person, in-person learning. I think as Dr. Baumfeld has just shown, the science does not support keeping the kids out of school. There's no reason for them not to be in school right now. Um, I, while I appreciate the, the presentation of getting back the kids over time because it's easier for the district and it's easier for the t- teachers, what I really would like to hear is, what is in the best interests of these students? Um, and it is not being out of school anymore. The fact that we are discussing having half-days on Wednesdays to deal with learning loss this year by planning for next year is, is really truly astounding. We're actually going to create more learning loss so that we can kick the can down the road and deal with it. We understand that you have an agreement with the teachers' unions to have half-days, and nobody wants to disrupt that, just.
Um, Lynn, we're gonna have to show you down. You can't.
Can't do that.
You can't be, I, I mean, you know, Miss Gal, you know what I'm saying? If you have a question or further comment that isn't disparaging the staff, um, that would be great.
Thank you.
Very enough, thank you. Next is gonna be Amy LeBlanc, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Amy LeBlanc at eighteen Woodman Way, apartment one. Um, I just had a thought after listening to you guys about the calendar and stuff. Um, I know, um, Superintendent Gallagher said half-days on Wednesdays, and then talking about if the teachers get the vaccine and how they're gonna be affected, and then giving a PD on that Friday. Wouldn't it make more sense to maybe have Fridays as a possible half-day? And then if the PD falls, instead of having two days in the same week that they would be half-day and then a P-day, PD day, they're losing out on more academic time. So I just think it would make more sense to use Fridays, and then that way you, well, we could have the Friday half-days, the Fridays off that we had back at the original time. It's just a thought after I heard what was being said. Thank you.
Thank you. Preston Carey, if you could proceed.
Hey, guys, Preston Carey, fifty-nine Jefferson Street. Um, so I guess first off, like, thank you, guys, you know, the students and teachers and everything else for creating a, you know, as best academic year as you possibly could have. Um, I'm not gonna debate with Lynn and Josh as they sit in the same house, um, about the. About the details of the academic things around this. But I think, uh, I've got two kids in the middle school and one in the high school. And you guys are creating a whole bunch of anxiety around trying to transition to something new. And I get it's coming from the state. And I don't really get the upside of six or eight weeks of change, right? They've got their pods, they've got their community, they've got all sorts of different things going on and you're going to yank that out from one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have Karen McCloud. Uh, Ms. Cloud, your unit.
Sorry about that. Can I be annoying and ask if you can hear me now?
Yeah.
Karen McCloud, 7 New Hall Lane, and I just want to give a positive shout out to our teachers and our administrators. Who have worked their tails off all year and they deserve a little bit more respect than they receive. And it kind of just goes to show how people really don't know what teachers do. How they spend their time worrying about their children and working and working and working. So I applaud all of you and thank you for getting our children back to school. And I'm a mom and a teacher out of district, so thank you all.
Great, thank you. Uh, Matthew Kane.
Hey, guys, how are you? Hey, thanks for everybody's hard work. I know it's been a crazy year and I know everyone's dealing with a lot of, um, just crazy things from all angles. I, I appreciate what Josh had to say and my only actually comment at this point is, um, two things. One, it was hard to hear some of this, so getting into the actual schedule without seeing the, you know, what was on the screen was difficult. I think what I understood was we were kind of phasing back with elementary up through high school. And my first question is, I'm just wondering, does it make sense to do it the other way? Like, it seems like the high school kids are in the most important four years of their school careers here in Newburyport. And maybe it's more important to, to get them back sooner, just a thought. The second thing is, I also just wanted to know, is there a point at which this meeting returns to being a public meeting where we stand in front of you on some level? Even if you're going to wait out line six, you know, outside in line, six feet apart. I, I think it's really dangerous to mute, to be able to mute somebody on a call. And, uh, you can do that when this is a Zoom meeting, but you can't do that when we're in person. And I, I, that I think is just really, really important. So, and that, I actually have the same question for the city council as well. Uh, has it, and I'll, I'll bring that up in next city council meeting, but those are my two comments and thanks for all your hard work, guys. I know it's been a long year.
Thank you. All right, that seems to be the last hand raised, uh, going once, going twice. Seems to be the end of public comments.
Sean, for clarity, can, I think Joanna just said yes, but can we post the presentation?
Yes.
And if people are asking, you can stop a public commenter in person and speak if they're.
We have, I would, um, you know, again, I. I would ask, um, actually for policy to take a look at what the state mandates on public comment are and what is permissible public comment. I stepped in because I do not want to be put in a situation of getting sued by anybody. Because I have allowed this kind of public comment that disparages groups, disparages individuals, identifies individuals. I just don't think that's public comment.
I agree.
It's not, it doesn't belong in a meeting like this. I will ask every single time to shut it down and I have shut it down when I've done it in person. It's just not appropriate. Doctor.
Yeah, oh, I agree. I just want to say also that if we do go back in person, it's limited really for the capacity.
Yes, we have to say, we have to say, we have to follow the state and the CDC guidelines. And we still have capacity limits in terms of bringing people into large meetings. And, uh, you know, the, obviously you look at the city council chambers, there's no way you can have 11 counselors and a moderator socially distanced there. Uh, the auditoriums don't really, we've looked at that in terms of setting it up for digital technology and that's a problem. But, you know, we are going to continue this point going forward for school committee meetings at the, here or at the senior community center, probably when they're finished the vaccination. Uh, clinics that they're doing there, uh, you know, in mid April. But, uh, it still will limit the amount of people who can attend. And I also think that there's been an advantage to having Zoom for a lot of families who are, we have a lot more participation at school committee meetings than we've ever had before. And I think we should continue doing somewhat of a, uh, I know it's not the right word, a hybrid model, uh, as we go forward. For, you know, people being able to watch from home, zoom in as well as when we can bring people in, it will still be limited.
If I could also make a quick clarification, um, one of the questions that came up in public comment had to do with guidance around traveling and whatnot. And I, I don't believe that there's going to be any guidance the district can offer that is going to supersede the guidance that the state is mandating.
Or the CDC.
Yeah, CDC. So, so that's where people should be looking for that guidance. I know, I, for example, New York State is happy to welcome you, but Massachusetts says regardless of whether they actually know. I have to wait for, I have to warrant when I get back.
I think what this memo said today was that school districts will be able to decide. As, as you close to the April vacation, that if any students travel to a restricted state, whether they're going to require that student to, uh, quarantine. The week following vacation.
It becomes a matter of policing, right? Like, I doubt you guys are going to be on social media looking for people who went skiing over, over February break game, whether you people, people going to the Bahamas on April break. It's just, I'm assuming.
The other piece too is, we'll send out more information, but the surveillance testing up in front of it. Gives us the option. So if a student has to quarantine, um, we can also test them. I think it's, you know, I'll get more information from CAPP, but that's one of the benefits. And when you identify a close contact, then you can test all of those close contacts and reduce or eliminate the quarantine.
Can I take you back on something that they brought up in one of the comments? And it's about the things that have been going well for a lot of people. Of this condition. I don't know if it's another survey or somehow to find out, like, what has gone well? I mean, we keep talking about it in the principal the other night, last week when they came, they're all talking about learning loss and mitigating this and mitigating that. I think there's going to be at least a sizable handful of kids for whom we're going to have to mitigate having to go back into the classroom. Sit still all day, not be without their pets. You know, I was thinking myself about like bathroom passes. We're going to be asking 17 and 18 year olds who've been at home for the year now to have a bathroom pass kind of thing, like just. Little things like that that, that are going to feel awkward, restrictive and, and uncomfortable. Like the guy said, you know, people have gotten into a routine. So I, I would, so I'll just say that I assume you guys are also thinking about that. You know, on this. Hazing and learning, like things have been a lot more personalized. Sleep. Start times, that kind of thing, like kid getting on a bus at seven versus rolling out of bed at 7:45 is big.
All right. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Discussion. Busy, yeah, we have a roll call vote please.
May Holliday?
Yes.
Right, Callan?
Yes.
People?
Yes.
David Popeye?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And Sean Riad?
Yes.
I agree with attending.